Just let me know when you're ready, Commissioner.
All right, everyone. Echo? Kurt? Yep. I'm. I'm muted.
I think it's corrected now. Can you test it here?
Okay, all right. Rock and roll. All right, thank you, everybody, and welcome to the February 20th, 2024 Lawrence City Commission meeting. And to go ahead and get us started off, I'll have Sherri go ahead and give us the rundown.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. To minimize distractions during the meeting, please silence your cell phones. For those attending virtually, please ensure you are muted and your video is off when you are not actively participating in the meeting. The city reserves the right to turn videos off or mute virtual participants. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the city's YouTube channel and Cable Channel 25. When the mayor calls for public comment, please approach the podium to whom you wish to speak. Those participating virtually should use the raise hand function to indicate they wish to speak. Please leave your virtual hand raised until you are called on. If you have any trouble, you can send a chat, and all chats go directly to the meeting host. Please state your name before speaking, and all comments will be limited to three minutes. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Sherri. All right, now go ahead and get us started off. I'll start with item, agenda, agenda item A, approve of the agenda. The city commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, approve the agenda. Moving on to item B, public comment. The public is allowed to speak on issues or items that are not scheduled for discussion on the agenda. Comments should be limited to issues and items germane to the business of the governing body. The commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Members of the public will be limited to three minutes for public comments.
Hi, my name is Caitlin McDermid. I am soon, I am a soon-to-be 20-year resident of Lawrence, Kansas. For the past seven years, I have been an advocate for the homeless and houseless members of our community through a variety of service acts. I have handed out care packages at the camps in the woods. I have managed the volunteer scheduling for the winter shelter during the pandemic. I was a regular at city commission meetings pre-pandemic, asking for you all to put together a comprehensive plan to assist the homeless. In 2021, I joined Justice Matters, seeing that one voice wasn't enough. Justice Matters has been working on this issue and other issues which are critically connected to it for years: affordable housing, mental health treatment access, et cetera. Justice Matters members were present when the city and county released the Place for Everyone Plan on January 17. Justice Matters members who are on the Ending Homelessness Research Committee knew that the Built for Zero Plan had to be brought here. The city and county and many others now know it, too. I have been largely critical of the city on this matter, and now I and all of Justice Matters must say, "Thank you. Thank you. Thank you." Thanks to all of the people who have worked tirelessly on this plan. Thank you for your continuous fight to get this plan done, even in the face of community unrest. I want to urge you not to lose focus of the ongoing, immediate needs for these community members, including emergency winter shelter, support services for those still in tents, and engagement with our homeless community members as you make decisions which will deeply affect their lives. You all know more than most that we are just in the beginning stages of this effort. Now the next stage of work begins. Know that I and Justice Matters will be supporting you and watching you as you approve, implement, and fund this fully comprehensive plan, which will save lives in our community and truly make Lawrence a place for everyone. Please approve the plan and make Lawrence a place for everyone. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Joe Qassad. I'm a lifelong Lawrence resident and a member of Justice Matters. I would like to add my voice to the many who have come today and who have already spoken to thank the Lawrence City Commission for their courageous role in developing and improving the plan called "A Place for Everyone." In a world where there is so much of our politics is business as usual, we are blessed and grateful to be in a city that is ready to roll up its sleeves and take the steps needed to address a very difficult problem in a rational, creative, and rigorous way. I want to personally express my appreciation to the commission, and I also want to give a shout out to the city staff, who have put so much time and effort into developing this innovative and sensible solution for a pressing problem in our city. One of the things that makes "A Place for Everyone" so special is that is the cooperation between the city and other entities who have all come together in the interest of its success. We would also like to thank Douglas County Commission for hearing the call and stepping up, as well as Burton Ash, Lawrence Community Shelter, Willow Domestic Violence Center, Family Promise, Habitat for Humanity, Tenant for Homeowners, LMH, Heartland Community Health, and all the other organizations who are invested as partners in this plan. There are a lot of reasons why one of our neighbors might become a homeless person: losing a job, a financial predicament due to medical expenses. One leading cause is not having enough money to pay a heating bill in the winter. And as we all know, a central theme in the homeless struggle is mental health, and people who need support slipping below the safety net and out of sight and out of mind from those who could offer assistance. "A Place for Everyone" addresses all this. And let me state, so there is no misunderstanding, this plan is not about sustaining anyone in a state of homelessness. It is about offering a path back from the edge, back to the light, back to a job, back to regular medication, and back to a self-sustaining life. And for those who have declared that we have a problem of too many homeless people in Lawrence, I would say, "Welcome to the table. This is how we're going to solve it." I invite all of you and everyone, regardless of neighborhood, political alignment, or income bracket, to join with us in building a better city with a place for everyone. Thank you.
Okay, any additional public comment in here?
I usually end up getting to play the role as the naysayer, so I'll go ahead and do it. I don't begrudge Justice Matters for their thank you. The overall plan itself is probably adequate, at least, and possibly sufficient. The problem lies in the underlying implementation of the plan. And I mentioned this to an individual who's here with Justice Matters tonight, just to put a bug in their ear, to understand that you can have an overall plan, but if you don't have an underlying plan to implement, which is what we saw during this last winter freeze in January, you had no underlying plan to implement. And that's what caused all the frustrations on the street, and I was a part of that. And I keep bringing these issues to the commission and pointing out these areas, and what the city continues to do is push me further away, further frustrating the situation. You know, I'm not sure if the city's aware or not, or whether the commission is fully aware or not, but the city has gone so far as to solicit trespassing from the business owners in the Caw Valley Drainage District group. And so Rick Renfro and his friends now have said that I can't be on any of their property either. So now, access to the camp is very limited, and as you all may already know, for the last two years, I've been the guy to provide the propane. So what your, what your people who, and you know, the man professes to be some sort of an expert after he's been in this for about as long as I have. I've been involved with homeless issues and things like this for about two years. Now, I've got a lot to learn, but at the same time, why am I not any more qualified than Rick Renfro to declare myself an expert? But you guys listen to this business owner as though he's the expert on homelessness, and his hub of hope is the solution for everybody. Now, the reality on the ground right now is that you have a homeless camp that has less than 10 people left living in it. Do you guys realize this? All of the campers are living outside the camp. Why aren't they inside the camp? A variety of reasons. Could it be Ron that sits around outside and watches everybody inside and outside with binoculars and has police out there quite regularly? Could be. Could it be the fact that the city's inequaled enforcement of policy really just does nothing but frustrate people to the point of not wanting to be inside the camp? There's a lot of people that live outside the camp that weren't evicted from the camp. They just choose not to be in there because they don't want to be under that kind of control, that kind of criminal oversight is the way I'll label it with some of those workers out there. And there's a lot more deep-seated issues that I'm going to continue to bring in here, and every time you try to push me further away, all you're doing is making the problem worse. And I'm just going to dump it on you. That's what I do. You guys could take some serious action to address these issues by approving this plan and also directing city staff to come up with underlying plans to implement.
Okay, Sherri.
I have a handout. Thank you. Sorry, I have to put my old lady glasses on. I cannot see. My name is Amanda Brubaker. I live at 941 Kentucky Street. I am here as an educator and a hemp cannabis advocate. Thomas Trower spent 30 years holding his Honk for Hemp sign on the same downtown corner every Sunday afternoon. Unfortunately, Mr. Trower passed away in 2021. I imagine that most of you in this room honked as you drove by. With the blessing of his loved ones, I am here today to pick up where he left off. Dear City of Lawrence, You in danger, girl. We are no longer in the sustainability part of the climate crisis. We are now in the harm reduction part. The greatest weapon to mitigate harm from the climate crisis was always in plain sight for 30 years at the same corner: hemp cannabis. In 2021, Douglas County produced 1,399, 873 carbon emissions, with trees and forests sequestering roughly 150,000 emissions. My friends, hemp cannabis sequesters twice the amount of trees and forests, twice the amount. Roughly, at a low estimate, sequestering hemp cannabis would have been half a million to 1.2 million. Hemp cannabis sequesters twice as much carbon as trees and forests. One acre of hemp produces 875 plants. Not only is hemp carbon negative, at times it is up to 40% carbon, with a biomass of five and a half times what you see. So to put that in terms of what you can see, a hemp plant is anywhere from 12 to 20 feet high. What goes in the ground as biomass is five and a half times what you see up outside of the ground, with a six-foot-tap root. There are over 25,000 different uses for hemp cannabis. Farming hemp, using hemp erosion controlled mats-
Ms. Brubaker, that's time.
...and fertilizer adds to carbon.
Ms. Brubaker, that's time.
Please look at that. Please, city commissioners, do your due diligence and study hemp cannabis. Go and go to your-
Ms. Brubaker.
-go to all of your-
I believe that's your time.
-streaming services and put in hemp and read and look at those services. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers. I wasn't, I wasn't coming here to speak, but I just felt the need to after that speaker. I totally support her, and I would just like to suggest, I mean, if we want to bring awareness to hemp, could we plant a hemp plant in one of our city parks? I mean, we, don't we grow stuff? And my understanding is hemp doesn't get you high like regular marijuana, so it's not, it's not something I think a lot of people would be stealing, or you know, much trouble would come from it, but what would happen is awareness would be raised, because there'd be all those whiny, you know, parents be like, "Oh, they're planting marijuana in the city parks." Then it'd be up to the community members to explain what it's doing, how it's helping the environment. So I would just like to definitely encourage you all to look into what she was talking about, and maybe how, like, how, how could we raise awareness throughout the city? And I mean, I just thinking off the top of my head about planting it in the park. I just encourage you all to think of ways to encourage hemp. Thank you.
Hello, David Bastin. Wasn't really planning on speaking either, but just listening to what some of the guys from Justice Matters were saying, and they alluded to helping, you guys helping, like with heating bills and so forth, and I've come across a few things where the city is helping some people with, let's just say, a water bill, and in another instance, they're not helping someone else with a water bill. So I don't know, it seems to me like that's a little bit of discrimination there, and I'll dig further into that and, and send you guys some emails. But anyway, and then with trespassing, Michael, from the camps, and everybody knows that he does do quite a bit for, for them, so I kind, I, I kind of find that disheartening, that that's going to happen to someone that's actually helping above and beyond what, what you guys are doing, too. So, yeah, I just needed to speak a little bit on that. You know, I had a little something else. I know the city practices a lot of diversity, equity, and inclusion, but it seems like the people that I see speak on that, I mean, they, they really seem more racist than, I don't know, I'm, I'm kind of new to all that, so I just, if you're helping one, more of one people and not helping, let's, let's, I mean, like, a few people that have been up here spoke about, you know, the white people aren't, blah, 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 and it seems like we're, we're doing more, and I'm not white, I mean, I'm partially white, and probably the majority of people have some, some, and I'm mostly Indian, but it seems like there's more programs and stuff directed towards minority groups or, instead of white people. I mean, it's always like, seems like the white person is bad now, so, but I don't know, and, and I need to dig more into that stuff myself and to see what programs you actually are funding and what, what you aren't funding. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. Courtney Shipley. Last week, there was a really important issue up, which was about partly closing the loop, and, and I did bring up that it is my studied belief that none of you have ever seen the agreement between Bowersock and the City of Lawrence, possibly even between the owners of the Spring Hill Suites and Avon Jakes. I've never actually tried- I've never actually tried to get an open records request from the City of Lawrence, because the City of Lawrence has always been forthcoming with that information. I think it's very important, not only for you all to have that information, in order to have a transformative effect on the river and our ability to make the river available to the taxpayers, the people who own the land, however fraught that discussion might be. The way to have that discussion is to actually have those agreements in front of you and to share those with the public. So again, I would implore you to ask for that information and make that information public. Thank you.
With that, check and see if there's any public comment on Zoom.
Liz Chappa.
Hi, Commissioner. Yes, my name's Liz Chappa, and I'm here to talk about just my experience being a renter here. My issue seems very privileged, just listening to everything that's going on in Lawrence, but, you know, I've been renting here for about 12 years, and I've talked to some of the Commissioners about this, but my lease is up, and I've lived here for three years, and every year it's gone up about $100. The other option is to go month-to-month, and with that option, it goes up another $200 each month. And then if I wanted to break my lease at any time, I would need one month's rent to break my lease and then give them 90 days' notice, so that's basically four months of rent that I would have to give them. And my point is that at any point, my landlord could tell me I need to leave in 30 days, but in order for me to find housing different than where I live, I have to give them at least four months' notice, or three months' notice, and then forfeit my deposit. So it's just, there needs to be some type of way that, first of all, they, at any point, they can just raise my rent, and I live on 11th in Connecticut. It's not a nice house. My roof leaks, the floor is messed up, I have duct tape on my floor, I have a young daughter, so it's just a frustrating place to be. And to have so much power over someone who rents here and wants to continue running here and continue living here, when really, you know, I don't have any power. And the only time housing is available is in August. Well, I don't live by the August lifestyle, you know, I work from home, and I need more space, and there's just not a lot of availability in housing. And I know a lot of you have talked about, you know, we get more housing around town, build new houses, and that will move prices down. Well, like I said, I live on 11th in Connecticut, this is not, the houses that have gone up around town have not affected my rent. If anything, it's just made it more expensive. So there just really needs to be a way to make sure that we have places to live, that we can, you know, have a consistent paycheck. Our paychecks aren't going up anymore, but, you know, our rental prices are. And so that's just really important to me. And, yeah, I think that's all I've got.
Stephen Watts.
Hi, thank you. Mayor Littlejohn, I want to bring to your attention the reality that the people who monitor the Zoom conference, those of us who, out of necessity, use the Zoom aspect to come into the city commission meetings, are excluded by whoever controls the Zoom process. They turn the audio off, they don't respond to the text chats every meeting. There is a propaganda piece read about how text to us. No, they don't respond, Mayor, and we are left in an ignorant level with no audio, nothing. I have left a couple of phone messages for you just now. Hopefully, you'll return those calls, my friend, so that we can discuss this in a mutually beneficial fashion.
That's all the comments, Mayor.
Okay. All right. All right, moving us on to Item C, Consent Agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and approved by one motion. Members of the governing body may remove items for separate discussion. Members of the public may remove items identified as quasi-judicial for separate discussion. Members of the public will be limited to three minutes for comments. Okay. Would anyone like to remove anything from the sense?
Sir.
Okay. All right. Didn't see anything up here, and we have one quasi-judicial item. Would anyone from out in the public like to remove that? Not seeing any. It's a quasi-judicial item. I am asking the public if they would like to remove that. I'm not seeing any. Sheri, can you check on Zoom, please?
Nothing on Zoom.
Okay. I will go ahead and bring us back.
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second that motion.
I have a first and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. None opposed, it looks like, passes 5-0. All right. So that, in case people didn't want to stay for the entire meeting, I'll give us a little bit to leave the room.
You want to hear my speech anyway?
It's all right. Thank you, I knew it was going to be great. One more second.
Yeah.
That door creates an echo.
It's like a 10:00 PM wasteland out here.
All right. Item E. I received their final report from the Community Police Oversight Work Group.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Casey Toomey, Assistant City Manager, and I'm very pleased to be here tonight to introduce members of the Community Police Oversight Work Group, who are here to share their final report with you. You may recall that the work group was created in 2022 to assess existing policies and procedures relevant to the receipt and investigation of complaints against law enforcement officers and citizen oversight of the process. After some initial stops and starts, the work group began meeting in earnest in May of 2023, and they had their last meeting just last week. Tonight, you'll hear their consensus recommendations about the complaint process, as well as the scope and structure of the Community Police Review Board. Following their presentation, you'll have an opportunity to ask questions and then discuss some next steps. Before I turn it over to our presenters, I do want to take a minute to acknowledge Jonathan Morris, who served as facilitator, as well as Melody Henning, Kurt Henning, and Kevin Powell, who provided so much support behind the scenes. Lastly, I want to express my gratitude to all the members of the work group. Thank you for serving your community and for your patience and perseverance over the last nine months. Your courage, honesty, and vulnerability have been central to this work, and without it, we would not be here tonight. So thank you. With that, I'll ask work group members Dr. Emily Turner, Harrison Baker, and Corporal Ian McCann to begin their presentation.
Good evening, city commissioners. My name is Dr. Emily Turner, and I am the initial presenter for this presentation.
And as we raise the slowest-ever-raising podium, my name is Harrison Baker, I'll be the middle presenter.
Corporal Ian McCann of the Lawrence Police Department, Chairman of the OPOA, Lawrence Police Officers Association.
And this is the presentation going over the Community Police Oversight Work Group and our final report. This presentation is going to include discussions about the work sessions and our community conversations, a discussion about our final report and consensus recommendations. We will proceed to talk about our progress and stakeholders, and then lastly, we will discuss our last steps with you all. So the founding of the work group developed, came out of a project charter, Resolution Number 74, 74, that was established by the city commission to create a work group. Citygate Study recommended a work group to use the interest-based approach to involve key stakeholders to address concerns related to CPRB. This really contains just the lack of progress with the board, some of the issues containing high turnover rates, in addition to lack of the ability for the board members to actually implement and enforce ordinance in relation to the complaint process. We had 12 work group members, five community representatives, three CPRB members, and two members of the police department command staff, and two police officers from the city that were contracted, along with the professional facilitator, to help us produce the consensus recommendations and a final report for the city. Overall, we held 12 work group meetings, 10 work sessions held at fire station number five. Our meetings generally went from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. All work group meetings were recorded via Zoom to comply with COMA, Open Public Meetings We held two community conversations at the Carnegie Building in July 10th and July 31st of 2023. These conversations with the community were very important, they had a high turnout. The main objective was to obtain key insight to what some of the prominent issues among community members were involving our police department and our CPRB board, and how to better improve our relationship with our police department, and getting an understanding of what some of the key issues are within our public in relation to police issues. The second part of, the key part of, you know, our work in the work group was to try to understand the complaint process. We were assigned the task of mapping the current complaint process. It became clear throughout the work group meeting that very little of us had a clear understanding of what that complaint process was. And we also understood that many of the public is not aware of what our complaint process is, or how, you know, what some of their rights are, and how they can actually submit a complaint, and what some avenues they can utilize to submit those complaints. It's a complex process. The policy described the process in detail. So overall, we ultimately came together to produce a set of recommendations that we hope that you guys will take seriously and consider. Just almost a whole year of us putting our heads together to create 12 consensus recommendations, well, 18 overall, that we hope that you guys will hopefully, you know, accept and ratify. 12 of these have to pertain to the, a new proposed complaint and appealed process. I will turn this over to Harrison, so he can actually walk you guys through each of the recommendations.
Thank you. Yes, hi, just as a reiteration, Harrison Baker, I'm going to be talking about the recommendation portions here. That's what I wanted to do. So the first thing to keep in mind is that I'm going to be going through quite a few recommendations. I know you might have, might have questions, but if you could hold those to just the end of the presentation, I'd appreciate it, so we don't go down any rabbit holes or anything like that. But generally speaking, these recommendations are about expanding access, so it's going to make it easier to file and track complaints. We're going to be increasing accountability and transparency, clarifying the appeals process to the CPRB. That is what the tan color on your image is, is the appeals process kind of expanded out. Educating the public about the complaint process, including follow-ups and needs to simplify the form and the map, and include an option for demographic info to enable the CPRB to better track trends and patterns that may not necessarily be obvious when you look at a surface level overall. Some highlights here are that the executive summary and consensus recommendation sections of the final report, the final report is, I believe, over 60 total pages, somewhere around in that area. The executive summary and the consensus recommendation were endorsed by all members of the work group. The recommendations that were consensus items, that were green, were practicable and actionable almost immediately. Obviously, you have policies that you have to follow in order to be like, okay, city, figure out how this actually works. You can't just say to do it, but included in the final report is also background information on the work group, the CPRB, and the complaint mapping process, or the complaint process mappings. 18 consensus recommendations are in the final report, they are labeled green, go, green for go. These were recommendations, all recommendations in the report were identified and discussed by meetings at August, on the August 28th work group meeting, but they were refined, edited, one was added, one was removed throughout the process, and the final number is all that we have gathered. The 18 were all supported by all 12 members in one of the final work groups, it was a unanimous choice. We went through each of them, everyone's like, we're good with how that wording is. And then, like I said, at the final three work group meetings, we really refined what these recommendations looked like, changed things if we needed to, such, things like that. Starting with the first four slides of recommendations, you'll note that there is a 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, the final report talks about the numbering and the recommendations narrative. Some of these recommendations actually have, like, commentary about why we came to this decision, why it was worded in such a way. That is in the final report, for that full narrative and the numbering explanation, because you'll notice later on, the numbering skips, that, there's a reason for that. So the first one is to expand access to the complaint form by making it available in digital format in more than one location on the city website, and in hard copy at multiple locations across the city. Educating the public that complaints are allowed to have, complainants, excuse me, are allowed to have at least one support person to assist with the filing of their complaint. This is actually keeping in current policy, this already happens, but codifying it protects interests into the future. Standardizing the complaint form and appeal form so that all relevant information can be gathered on each and every complaint. Establish neutral parties who can assist individuals with the complaint process by following established guidelines for assisting the complainant. This would be an individual who just helps with the process of submitting the complaint, they are not going to be a support figure for that individual. Make public the names and contact, public contact information of people who can assist with the complaint process, and the names and public contact information of the individuals formally receiving the complaints. Create an option for a complainant to be able to include demographic data in their complaint. This can help enable the tracking of trends and patterns, like I mentioned previously. Provide educational sessions on the complaint process for the public once the city has implemented recommendations. Simplify the complaint forms using plain language and making accessible the diagram of the complaint process. Ensure proper tracking of the complaints with regular updates to the CPRB. The police department should continue to provide a monthly listing of all complaints, including a summary of the allegations, investigative findings, and relevant dates, with names and other personally identifiable information withheld. This is, again, something that currently is a process, but in the future, codifying things to protect rights and is the better option moving. Section 2, 2.1 here, the CPRB's overall purpose should be to serve in a review capacity of appeals. Expanding the CPRB's review capacity to include all Level 1 and Level 2 infractions that are not limited to racial or other bias-based policing. The CPRB should offer advice or recommendations to the police chief after reviewing appeals of complaints as needed. The CPRB should review data and summary reports to identify concerning trends and patterns and make recommendations to the police chief as needed. The CPRB's advisory role should include a community engagement about the role of the The CPRB should be able to review race-based trends in data and review available local data. This is information that's already kind of publicly accessible, but having it all bundled together would be able to, the CPRB would be better able to gather that information and use it for their purposes. The CPRB should notify the complainant of its recommendation when submitting recommendation, the recommendation to the city manager, and then the city manager should notify LPD, the CPRB, and the complainant of the decision when the final decision is rendered. And then, finally- And then finally, the CPRB should not be combined with the Human Rights Relations Commission as is suggested to the city. It would, we felt that it would lead to a weakening of both commissions independently. It would lose their separate goals. But that is the recommendation section. I know I blew through that, so I'm sure if you have questions, I'm more than happy to answer them, but.
Good evening. I'd like to talk just briefly about the structure of the group, how we were able to get this accomplished, and then going forward from here. So as mentioned previously, the Citygate Study conducted a few years ago recommended that the City Commissioner, the city staff puts together a group of people that touches all parts of this process, and I think that was a great idea, so I'd like to commend that idea, and I think that my fellow work group members would agree with that. We had five community members, three CPRB members, four members from the LPD, to, again, the command staff and the officer level. I would say that when you're on one side of an issue or another, regardless of why, it can be very easy in our modern society to become polarized and to make assumptions or theories about why something did or didn't happen. What this group allowed for is the opportunity to sit across from one another, people that are from different places, and listen, right? Get to know one another and remind ourselves that we're all humans, that we're all, we're all people, we make mistakes, and build, build trust. When you listen and you build that trust, you start to realize, okay, there's not an ulterior motive here. The community doesn't think the police are just trying to hide, and the police don't think it's just a fishing expedition to get us in trouble. So we start to build that trust, and we start to come up with these recommendations for how we can move forward and, and really make this group what it's meant to be. A little bit of history, this group was founded shortly after I started my career here, and it's been something that's just been churning within our community this entire time. So I guess being a part of that process and, and seeing this maybe get to where it needs to be is fulfilling. I would say, moving forward from here, I, I like the work that we were able to do as a group, and I would recommend that if this ever needs to get revisited, I do believe we've made a pretty robust process that people will like, and I, and I hope, my hope and our hope is that it yields the results that everybody would like to see. I'm not going to call it perfect. There's always room for improvement, but I would say that this process was good, and if it never needs to be revisited, going back to this type of setting, I think would be, wouldn't be great. So there's a little bit of feedback there, along with any other city process. So thank you.
Okay. To wrap this up, we have some next steps. Obviously, the work group is now at its completion. We, one thing I want to highlight is the cost that went into creating these recommendations. Harrison spoke here clearly, relatively quickly. 18 recommendations, 12 pertain to changing the complaint process, and we just want to highlight our work group because of how much dedication and commitment they put into this, and we hope that you guys take the same time and consideration to pass these and bring these forward. As Officer, you know, Ian expressed that, you know, this is just the beginning. There's a lot of change that still needs to be done, but now our recommendations are in your guys' hands, so we hope that you guys will take the time to consider them, and hopefully we see progress and some positive future. The public education on the complaint process, we would like to see enhancements there. And I would lastly like to provide a lot of thanks to our stakeholders and everyone involved. I would like to thank the members of the community, first and foremost, to attend the community conversations and the work group meetings, who completed the questionnaires and shared input with the work group. I would like to thank work group members Harrison Baker, Anthony Bricks, sorry, and Brenda Clary, Tanya Ingram, Chief Lockhart, and Jacqueline Nance-Mingler, Skylar Richardson, Ian McCann, I skipped over you, sorry, Doris Ricks, Greg Temple, myself, and Alex Kimball Williams, current, former members of the CPRB, Casey Tome, Melody Henny, and city staff from the City Hall, the Police Department, Fire Department, and Parkson Rec Department, and of course, our facilitator Jonathan Morris and Jay Morris Consulting, and the City Commission for the opportunity to serve on the work group, and of course, all of our friends and family for your guys' support. Thank you so much for your time and letting us present our recommendations to you. That's the wrap. Oh, of course, questions, sorry. Run off.
One thing I would like to add, I'm so sorry, I had it on my paper and I didn't look at it, was that we had the 18 consensus item recommendations. There were another 30 that we had discussed at some level. There were the yellows, which were mixed support and warrants further consideration, and reds that were just no consensus. I would caution not to say that just because something is yellow or red that it's a bad idea, it just means that either it had the mixed support, needs to be thought about, or one or two people thought it was a great idea, one or two people thought it was a bad idea, and the rest were kind of like, I don't really know. So digest all 48 recommendations. If you choose to pass all of the green ones tonight, that's great, but don't just shelve the report and say we're done. Continue to research the other ones. But now, now that I finally finished my whole piece, if you have any questions for any of us, we're welcome.
Okay. At this time, I would open it up to questions from the City Commission.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm going to read from section three of Ordinance 7474, where it says, "Project Description," and it says, "A comprehensive review of the Lawrence, Kansas Police Department completed in May of 2021 included 75 recommendations for changes to policies, procedures, and other topics. Contained in this report were findings and recommendations pertaining to the handling of complaints against law enforcement officers, community police relations, public trust, and transparency, citizen oversight, and the Community Police Review Board. The purpose, the proposed project involves a review of the complaint process, relevant findings and recommendations from the Lawrence, Kansas Police Department Study, relevant laws, regulations, policies, and procedures." So from what I'm hearing, it looks like you guys really lasered in on the complaint process. And I looked at some of the other recommendations, so was it, and I did review several other, the meetings, especially the last meeting, and I will say, you guys spent a lot of time debating about yellow and whatnot, but I get it, I get it. Proportional procedure matters. Do you feel, do you believe you got out of this what you expected to get out of this?
So personally, yes and no. I think that there is always room for work groups of cities to be the best that they can be. Like Officer McCann said, the report is not perfect. Perfection is unattainable, and it can always be improved, but the, I think what we started to run into was work group fatigue, and, you know, we went for 12 total sessions, 10 work groups and two public sessions. That was a couple more than I think we were originally supposed to. I think it was supposed to be eight work groups and two community sessions. It was a two-year-long process, and things we focused, the group focused on what we ended up focusing on, which was the complaint process. Part of that is, I think there are a lot of hot-button topics when you start really getting into the idea of police accountability, just in general. It is an uncomfortable topic for a lot of people to talk about, and we began to feel that this group was not adequately able to discuss all of those topics. And so we focused on what we were able to adequately discuss, and the recommendations that are in the report, especially the 18 consensus items, I think goes a long way in improving the CPRB process. And again, it's not going to be perfect, but it definitely helps, and especially the expansion of the Level 1 and Level 2 complaints. Currently, it's only racial and bias-based policing. The recommendation that we can, we all agreed upon was to expand it to a lot more potential complaints that can be reviewed by the CPRB. The more review that an entity has, the more accountability it has, and that's my opinion. I guess I shouldn't say that as if it was factual, but the more oversight an entity has, the more accountability there will be. Hopefully that answered your question. Does anyone?
Yeah, I would just add from a CPRB member perspective that I think we did a great job, you know, there's narrowing our scope to focus on the complaint process because the past, you know, I, I came onto the, the board in October of '22, and, you know, over the course of several months, deny even, we, we never really had an opportunity to review one complaint. I know that previous conversations with the city staff, you know, this was a big issue, you know, moving forward, and I think that some of these recommendations will allow us to broaden the scope of what we can review and hopefully potentially help identify certain, you know, patterns and trends and, and improve our relationship with LPD, but we need progress of the board. We're kind of, you know, they're the reason we have a high turnover rate, they're the reason there's these existing issues. If we don't have complaints coming in a certain area, there shouldn't, there's no reason why we shouldn't be able to, you know, look at some of the other complaints coming in and see where we can help. So, and, and definitely informing the public. They, they're not hardly aware of what their rights are when it comes to submitting complaints, and they, they deserve to have, you know, knowledge and improved standards where we can help them and assist them with submitting complaints when that's needed.
Just to add to that, I think there's a lot of complexities when you look at policies and laws and stuff like that, and so we, we quickly, with Jonathan's guidance as well, zeroed in on the complaint process and getting those easy wins. And I neglected to mention this in my presentation, I apologize for that. I think that what we've done here, you know, anytime you can get 12 people to agree, I probably couldn't get 12 cops to agree to something, so anytime you can get 12 people from a variety of walks of life to agree to something, I think that's a monumentous, monumental task that's been accomplished, and this was a lot of hard work. So kudos to the group from me to that, for that. I would also say that what we hope to accomplish was increasing public confidence and trust in this group, and thereby also the Police Department, because that's hugely beneficial to the community. Anytime that you can have a process that people trust, that they have confidence in, you're much more likely to increase their acceptance of the results, even if they don't like the results, and they're much more likely to accept it. So I think that makes everything better for just the community as a whole.
And having at least three attorneys on a work group makes things difficult sometimes, speaking as an attorney.
It happens. So Dr. Turner, you make, you know, you are one of the, I don't want to say last surviving, but, you know, steady plugging along members of CPRB. And going into like, you know, I know myself personally, I had high hopes for this work group, and it was one of the things that I think I pushed back very, I pushed back hard on members of CPRB about, you know, this work was bigger than just changing an ordinance, and just changing something without really doing the due diligence to see what this work could mean to the potential, to the overall universe of community policing in Lawrence. I think there were some gaps there, and I agree to disagree with many a chair and many a members, and I stand firmly by that. Do you, so some of the things that you, in you all's meeting, you know, you wanted to remind us, and I felt like you said it several times, very loud and clear, that you, you guys don't want this work to fall deaf on our ears. Do you feel like, going back into that role now as a CPRB member, where do you feel, do you feel more emboldened to continue to move process? Do you feel like where your ordinance stands, where your, where language stands for what you are charged to do as a CPRB member? Is it where it needs to be, or do you feel like the CPRB needs more support from us to make that happen?
Absolutely.
Do you feel emboldened to do it?
Right. Honestly, I say we definitely need more support from you guys. I think this is the tip of the iceberg. Right now, we have three members on the CPRB, and if, depending on how, you know, the outcome of tonight goes, that's gonna, you know, we, it's likely we're not going to have a meeting again for, you know, quite some time until, you know, we understand where we stand on these recommendations. But right now, we don't even have enough board members for a quorum based on our own ordinance. I think a big part of the issue is that our original ordinance, we haven't had really an opportunity to all get educated on it as board members and try to act on some of the other roles that we possibly could have. I think since the beginning with some of the original board members, the complaints had been a big part of the focus of the CPRB, and I accepted that when I took on this, this role. And I do think that the work group recommendations will, if they are approved, will help significantly help the CPRB move forward in terms of, you know, broadening the scope of the recommendations, not the recommendations, but the complaints that we can actually review that are outside race, racial, and bias-based policing. But absolutely, we, we're going to need a lot more support, you know. But I think that, right now, I feel like my feelings as CPRB member are largely, largely going to depend on the outcome of, of the ratification of hopefully, you know, some of the recommendations, but there's a lot of them, and I've also accepted, based on even how our current ordinance is written, that some of them might be more challenging than others to implement, and it will take time to, to get all this on, on track, but I do have hope. And I think right now, we need something, we need something, because the board had definitely fallen apart.
Then my question is to staff, we've been, I know we've been struggling to recruit, I'm assuming we've been struggling, or maybe it's been by design that we've been delaying appointing people to CPRB. Where are we at with that?
I think it, if you all recall, we did pass a resolution that sort of postponed future meetings of the CPRB until this work group had done its work and completed their recommendations to you all. So I don't know if that answers your question directly or not, as far as difficulty recruiting. I do just want to clarify, I believe we have four members right now, which is a quorum, so, I'm sorry, Dr. Turner, to correct you on that one, but.
No, and, and I remember that, and I also remember in December, maybe it was December, it might have been November, I can't remember, when we received the initial recommendation from the Steering Committee on Boards and Commissions, known as the Committee on Committees, that there was the recommendation to combine CPRB with the HRC. So from a standpoint, as far as the process, if we put this on hold, and we're now, we're waiting on this recommendation, which one's the chicken and which one's the egg? I don't think the work group knows that answer.
Yeah. I think I, I think that is up to all of you. I think you all said you were waiting to hear their thoughts on the decision of whether or not to merge those two boards, so I do think that is work that you all, and discussion that you all could have, depending on what your consensus is. Then I think there probably is work that needs to be done to, to draft ordinances along with all the other ordinances that were part of that work. Craig, I don't know if you would have anything to add, if.
That was, I was about ready to say, we've, we've continued the drafting work to bring you that recommendation, but you all did give direction to wait until this presentation came so that you could determine the chicken/egg thing.
Thank you for that reminder.
What would the ETA be on that absent? Next month, two months, three months? What, on all the other, all the committees and committees? How's that coming?
We had said May, I believe. Hopeful for April.
Hopeful for April.
No later than May. But this is one piece that there was direction to not make any decision on those, as was stated, until we had the recommendation on whether to.
Okay. I guess I had a question for the committee, and Harrison mentioned this, and Dr. Turner mentioned this. I mean, we have the consensus items, and we have others we definitely want to consider. Given the work and the pause of the work, do you have a suggestion on, do we, let's assume we agree on the, on the 18 consensus items, should we move forward and get that going first, and then come back and look at them? Or should we take the time to, to look at all of them, knowing that that might delay us longer to getting something up and running? You have an opinion on that? If you don't, then.
I have an opinion on everything, almost. I think that the 18 consensus items, again, personal, this is not me speaking for the work group as a whole, are not antithetical to.
work group as a whole, are not antithetical to the other recommendations. I mean, maybe one or two of them, there's a few that are like, well, that's not really what the other recommendation said, but there's a reason why one is consensus and the other is no consensus. There is obviously a risk that if you pass the 18, let's just say, best case scenario, that's what happens, and then the rest are developed, they're researched, they're discussed, and then it kind of stalls out. There's obviously a risk there that those, some of those mixed support recommendations are amazing. I would have them as green, but that's not what the group had as a consensus item. Some of the reds, I'd even be like, let's do this. So, there is a question, obviously, there's a, there's a strategy choice to be made. And what the best strategy is, I think, is start the improvement, but make sure that you know that you need to continue the work. And I don't know if that's something that you can bind yourself to as a city. I don't know if that's an option available, but if that is the option, that's probably the best option, is say, nope, we'll pass these 18, city figure out how to make it happen, don't merge, make these changes, and then in six months, come back to me with whatever, however this research works, let's look at the recommendations that are warranted to further discussion, how does that work in a new ordinance, and then just update the ordinance again. Now, again, I don't know what the process to updating these ordinances looks like. It could be a year-long, very bureaucratic process. I don't know all the facts, but that's what I would recommend doing.
Thank you. Yes?
So, I think there's some great conversations, and appreciate getting caught up to speed on this, but I heard a couple of things I'd like to get a little clarification on, and specifically, Ian, if you could, you mentioned easy wins. So, what I wonder what might be a moderate or a hard win, and what kind of things might be more challenging so we can challenge ourselves maybe in the future, not just these items, but things that not, are they, are they outside the red and then green items, or things that weren't even addressed outside those things?
Absolutely. I would say they are the yellow and the reds, to use the color coding. A lot of the yellow and the reds require, or we felt like as a work group overall, required some further research, likely by city staff, city attorneys, et cetera, to implement some of those things. There was, again, mixed support on those, so it was hard to really move forward with those. I'm gonna use Jonathan's words here, we had three buckets, right? It was the easy win bucket, the bucket of like, hey, maybe we can get to something here. And a lot of the greens ultimately came from that middle bucket, it just required some discussion. And then the absolutely not gonna happen bucket, which is where a lot of the reds ended up residing. And those are just for one reason or another, on different sides of this, it was like, that's a, that's a no-go, it's not gonna happen. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it's, and it helps me follow up with, how do we get to a point where more things are reasonable in everyone's eyes and not the far extremes where there's no common ground? But I believe, you know, in order to move things forward and to have, you know, people who are members of the board, who are reasonably interested, invested, and, you know, a part of the process, if there's so few things for them to be a part of, that we must give them, you know, a thing or things to do, or not do it at all, I guess that's my opinion in general. So, I feel like expanding what needs to be done based on general consensus, you know, some sort of 70% happiness, you know? And I feel like you've probably gotten there somewhat, and I wonder how far would, how much effort it would take to get further down the road, in your opinion?
In my opinion, since I talked about the structure of the work group, I do think that the structure allowed for us to all actually realize that 80% of us in the community are a lot closer together than we are apart, like you said. And I think that the 18 consensus ones are, are, come from that area.
Okay.
There's a few in the yellows that, with a little bit more research, some advice from attorneys, I think we can get there. And then the rest of them, again, there's another 30, I can't speak to each one of them, I haven't memorized them, but there's, there's a number that I, I think we're pretty far away from personally.
Thank you.
And if you guys have additional to that.
That's helpful, thank you very much.
I think on some of the no consensus, there's just fundamental disagreement about them due to the position of the individual in the group. Like, then that is what it is. And so, there won't be a consensus, there wouldn't be a shift. They'd always probably be yellow if for no other reason than like, the strength of the conviction of the person holding the opinion. We would not have put a consensus item if one person's like, I absolutely hate this, how dare we even suggest, would not have been a consensus item even if there was just one vote against it. It would have been, okay, this one stirred up a lot of emotion, let's put it in the warrants further discussion, because there are a lot of moving parts that a city can do that a work group cannot.
Mm-hmm.
And ultimately, the city can just make the decision of, we're making the decision and the parties have to deal with it. Like, that's your prerogative as a city, that if there's a red recommendation, the no consensus, that had very strong opinions from the community, from the police, you can just say, we're doing it anyway. Let the chips lay where they are. And that is your prerogative as the city. Don't necessarily recommend it, but you can.
Thank you.
One of the next steps listed here is the work group completion. Is there something else the work group is needing to do?
No, that was just saying that we are officially complete. We have, we have done what we needed to do, we've submitted the report. I think that you guys might need to make a motion or something to be like, we're dissolving the work group. But again, that's, I don't, I don't know if that's accurate or not.
Okay. Next step, so I was kind of curious.
Yeah.
I guess, kind of a process question, let's, for simplicity, say, let's do the 18. What, what does staff see as the next steps to make that happen?
Casey?
Oh, I'm sorry. I think that what we were hoping to hear from you all tonight was some consensus direction, and then we can go back and say, are these things that need to be in an ordinance, yes or no? Are these things that, for example, a lot of the recommendations related to the complaint form, that's work we can do immediately without any further direction from you all if, if that's your consensus tonight? So, I think it's kind of a go down through the list, and, you know, maybe a suggestion would be, give us a 30, 60-day timeframe to come back to you with, here's the ones we've already done, here's ones where we need more additional direction from you, or here's the, the next steps that we would recommend, something like that perhaps? We struggled with whether to have this be a work session item for you all, because we wanted to have discussion, but in the past, we've also known that there were times you were ready to take action, and so, we wanted to give you all the flexibility if there were specific things that you wanted to direct us to do tonight, too. So, we're really at, here at your leisure.
Now, the action is just to receive the report. So, do we give direction?
Again, we've kind of, we've kind of struggled with that at times when we have work session and we had, say, receive report, and folks have shown up and said, well, I wasn't prepared to give direction. So, we wanted to put it on your regular agenda in case there were items that there were a majority of you who were ready to move forward on. So, we felt like it was the most flexible, but I'm just, in the interest of transparency, sharing with you that we did struggle with where to place it on your agenda, because we didn't know what your direction might be. So, there again, I don't know if Sheri or Craig might want to chime in or share anything.
So, I have another question. So, these recommendations, have they been run through our legal staff?
That's, that's a city question.
Laura Graham from our city attorney's office has been following along with the work of this group, seeing drafts. So, I think, again, there's not draft language, but our thought was, let's let our staff, if there is ordinance language that needs to be drafted, the city attorney's office would have the, would be the place that we would prefer as staff, that that be happening. Is that answering your question?
No. So, staff, our legal staff has not looked at each one of these recommendations, or yellows, or reds, and said, yeah, we can do that, no, we don't believe we can do that. Looks like Tony is gonna wait.
Good evening, commissioners. Our staff has met and we have reviewed the full report together, and we've focused on the 18 consensus items, and those all look doable. We discussed the others and some, we discussed the others informally, sort of at a high level, and we have opinions about some of them, but we really wanted, we were wanting to hear your discussion and see which items you prioritized and which ones you wanted us to look at before we did further research. We, we got the report on Thursday when the commission got it as well.
I guess my last kind of process question, picking one of these, like, you know, make sure the complaint form includes demographic, demographic data. Do you see, like, something like that that the staff could just do? You see that, going back to the CPRB, to look at the complaint, the new complaint forms and get their appearance, or you see that coming back to us, or do you have an opinion?
I think that staff can address a lot of those, obviously with input from our city attorney's office.
Sure. So, oh, sorry to jump in. The, the green ones are pretty much in the can, like, you know, it's been vetted for the most part with both staff and, you know, our attorney's staff and things like that, but the yellow is, still needs further development. I'm just getting that process right.
Yeah, I think we all focused on the green consensus recommendations. If you go back and listen to some of the discussion of the work group, you'll, you'll hear that reaching consensus is challenging, and so, we, rather than continue on and asking this group of folks to give us another nine months of their lives, we chose to focus on what we could reach consensus on. So, yeah, I think, I would say, like Tony, that the green consensus recommendations are where staff has spent most of their time saying, yes, these seem doable.
Any further questions?
Not right now.
All right. Okay, I will go ahead and, since this isn't, or did you have?
I was about to ask what you were about to do.
Yeah, public.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Public comment.
It's an agenda item, so, yeah.
No, I know, I was just, the way you started it up had me a little pause for concern.
Now, to open it up for public comment.
Thank you for letting us present tonight, by the way.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your work.
Tonight, the Lawrence City Commission heard a second round of recommendations for community oversight and accountability of the Lawrence Police Department. In the six years or so since the city set this board up, it has been little more than a checkmark on the city's agenda, otherwise known as window dressing, as Jane Gibson put it in 2022. We've spent more than $120,000 on consultants who have made recommendations that are either ignored or cast aside. There's also been significant turnover and much frustration regarding the actual scope and responsibility of that board. In 2022, when Jane Gibson resigned from the Community Police Review Board, she wrote a letter to city leaders explaining her decision to do so. Her reasons were directly tied to the obfuscation she experienced from the chief of police. That letter is available at the City of Lawrence website. During the first 38 minutes of a March 9, 2023 CPRB meeting, our chief of police was called out for his misstatements in the meeting minutes. Excuse me. For his misstatements in the meeting minutes, and the board actually discussed moving to make corrections on that. Shortly after that happened, board members found out that they hadn't actually reviewed an actual complaint, that the chief had conducted an exercise with them without telling them. Jane Gibson resigned with this letter, you had two more board members resign after the manipulation. Don't look over there, he knows he did it. And you know, the funny thing is, is you believed it, because in November of 2022, you proclaimed that the board had actually reviewed a complaint and used that to push back on criticism, and you were wrong. Board members were not pleased. In fact, our mayor at the time, as I just said, had used this reviewed complaint as an example of work accomplished to put back, push backing on critics at that city commission meeting. This was said in response to complaint, to comments that I had made. You'd have to go back and watch these meetings for hours to watch how these discussions played out, but there was a push-pull in that room. And when you listen to the police officers, when they were deciding how they were gonna defer to things, I can't tell you how many times I heard words to the effect of, if that's what the chief wants. And you can go back and listen to the meetings, and, and don't look at me like I'm crazy, because you guys need to be listening to these meetings, and if you haven't yet, and you're looking at me like you're confused, you're the problem. Commissioner Sellers once commented that she didn't want this process to take 10 years like it did in Louisville. We're already over halfway there, and we still have no accountability in this town.
I wasn't gonna come up and speak, but since I have this opportunity, and I appreciate it, I am Mike Dever, I've never met you, appreciate you being on the city commission. I am the oldest and the most original of the board, police review board. I feel a little bit mixed with my, my voice here tonight, because I have a lot of passion for this board, Lisa Larson knows that. I've been here from the beginning. I wasn't allowed to be on the work group, but I'm still on the board, and I've put a lot into this, and I, I know from the beginning through five, six years, where we, where we've tried to come from, where we want to go to. I commend these guys for the work they've done. They can only do so much in a given amount of time, and that's an absolute. And what they've done and come up with, with the consensus, I so appreciate, but I want to bring a couple of things to light on the yellow and the red. When you asked Mike Dever about, what are those things, where could we go, some other steps? The standards of review, it's mixed support, warrants further discussion 1.5 under investigation. The standards of review that the CPRB uses to evaluate complaints needs to be reestablished, but done so in a simple, easy-to-understand manner. I think this is an important point that we really need to be looking at, about what, what are our standards of review, to help us put it in perspective. The other that I'd like to really bring to light, that I think speaks volumes about if we're ever gonna have oversight, and that is non-consensus, item number 1.5, it's in the red. The final investigative report and all communications from the complainant to the police would be turned over to the CPRB before they consider, consider the appeal. There were four greens, I mean, four, there were four, three yellow dots and three red dots. I think this is a really important point here, that we, as a board, sign, sign a statement of, you know, agreement of confidentiality. And if we cannot see the entire investigative file, if we're going in to appeal, then what good are we as oversight? What good are we as oversight for this city? And I think we never can get to this point to get over this, because it's a personnel file, and everything's hidden in there. And we, once again, sign a statement of confidentiality, and we have to abide by that. So, those are some important points, but I think there's a lot of, a lot of really good points in the yellows and the reds that, that are out there, that understandably, especially five community members that have not been in some of these shoes, and one may be in prior law enforcement here in Lawrence.
Time.
That, anyway, that I would ask you to look at all of them. Thank you very much.
Hi, David Bastin. I wasn't really gonna speak on this, because I don't know much about it, but, where do I start? For them, it sounded like they were really gonna only address race and biased policies right from the get-go, and I, I mean, that needs done, of course, but I think they can do a little bit more than that. And then I didn't know if they do find out, like, if an officer that they review sounds like down the road, because that's not what they're gonna be reviewing now, if an officer is, has something brung up against him, and it's a felony, misdemeanor, or what have you, what's gonna happen with that? And I don't know if they will turn that over to the commission of peace officers or not. I don't know if they even know about that, but they're the ones that basically certify every law enforcement officer for them to be able to, to have a job as a. every law enforcement officer for them to be able to, to have a job as a police officer. And they don't investigate the race, race and bias, but they will investigate. An individual can even bring this up to them, and then they have to investigate that through, basically, if it's a crime that one of the police officers is accused of. So I didn't know if that would be part of their policy or not, if they review that things and the chief lets them. Even if they don't, and they're not able to review it, they can do that anyway, and then they will basically do their own investigation, and they have to comply, so. But that's just something that you can look at. I'm sorry. But I just want to know if that was part of their process that they can put in there, if it's not. And then doesn't even have to go through them. If any individual feels that there's a crime committed by a law enforcement officer, they can go directly to, to the Commission of Peace Officers and fill out, deal with them with some certain things, and then they'll investigate it themselves. So just, thank you.
Just one more item. I'm Brenda Clary. I'm, I think, the last remaining civilian member of the work group who hasn't spoken. To address Commissioner Dever's questions about the yellows. Personally, as I look at those, there is sort of a fine and arbitrary line between what got labeled green and what got labeled yellow. If you look at the yellows, you'll see some of them go hand in hand with some of the items in the green, but they're not, we didn't reach consensus on them, but yet we very strongly wanted the commission to consider those, what are labeled yellow, as part of the package. But just know that we weren't to the point where we could take a unified position in fully recommending them. I think we're calling them suggestions rather than recommendations. But it's not that those weren't thoroughly discussed and taken seriously by the work group, and I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers. My first question is just, what was the purpose of all this? Like, if the only change that comes from this is the city now allowing non-racial complaints to be reviewed, then what was the purpose of all this? Because that's what the public has been asked, like, like those general consensus points, like, that's what the public has been asking for this whole time. And like, that first meeting where the public, where we sat those tables and we asked, you know, like, what changes or whatever, like, the whole, like, all the tables, it's like the review that the CPRB needs to be able to review cases besides just being if there's a racial component to it. And so it just seems like this is, if you don't do anything except, like, oh, let's open up complaints to non-racial, you know, stuff, well, that's something you could have all done by yourself back in 2020, when Jennifer Ananda first brought all this stuff up. So, I mean, it's just, I want to see a lot more than just, I want those yellow and red stuff. You all need to review, like, consider that stuff, because otherwise you just wasted money, like, on stuff. And also, I think Sellers was talking about how much focus the board did on the complaint process. If you all would have solved that problem before you sent it to them, like, if that, I wonder what this would have looked like if we had opened up, like, the review process and allowed more cases to be reviewed. Would they, how much time would they have spent talking on it? What other stuff would they have talked about instead? And that's my, that's my biggest peeve, is you all, there was something that was common sense, and you all could have solved it years ago, and you just strung out, you strung it all, you strung it all out, and then other stuff that could have been talked about, we were talking about common sense stuff that should have been solved years ago. And also, I want to talk about combining the HRC and the CPRB. I am completely against that. I would like to see felons on the HRC. I'm not sure there, I think it'd be easier to convince people felons can be on the Human Relations Commission than it would be the CPRB board, because when I was at that public thing, there is concern that, well, the felons might have a grind, or an axe to grind with the police. So I just want to say, that's one of the reasons I'm completely against that. And, yeah, and also, I guess my final recommendation is, like, tonight, I want you all to open up the review process. You just need three of you all. Just do it tonight. Thank you.
Looks like that's all the public comment here in the room. Sherri, can you take us on Zoom?
Stephen Watts.
The first and most pertinent question is, when will the town commission say, all right, the Community Police Review Board needs to begin meeting effective what date? This whole process, the whole purpose was to stop a public review of the police. That's all this has been about, and we continue to sit here and do nothing and listen to this stuff. Oh, the work of the group has been tremendous in terms of, what did Mr. Harrison state? Work group fatigue? What a joke. Those guys got led down the primrose path by four cops inside the meeting and two ringers who were appointed by Ms. Larson, who has been here for eight years. We have struggled to make a community review board for our town police department, and it has been resisted tooth and nail from day fricking one. Mr. Arabi, they don't watch these meetings. They don't know what went on. I attended every one of these work group meetings virtually, and have you guys done that? It was very difficult to understand the audio precisely because that's what they wanted to do. We got the lone Ms. Littleton, a police officer who was negated from the entire process and relegated to a nothing status. I hope that she understands what time it is. The people of Lawrence deserve what they get with respect to policing in our town and the resistance to provide accountability inside Lawrence, Kansas. It's kind of a joke, it's kind of a dark joke, it's kind of a funny joke. Clary is an apologist. She and Templeton were put on the review board by Ms. Larson as ringers at the last minute. Absolutely incredible. You really have to review the meetings to understand the fatigue that people are talking about. And so, you know, once again, the entire purpose was to stop the public review of the police in our community. All fine and good. Okay, that's over and done with. The dog and pony show is done. Please, tonight, reinstate the Community Police Review Board and start having the meetings again.
That's all the comments there.
Thank you, Sherri. All right. Bringing it back to us. I think we did a good job of asking what they were expecting from us.
Definitely. So tonight, we're supposed to receive and/or make some sort of recommendation to move it forward. I'm not sure if everyone's prepared to do that, but I want to just talk about that, whether we just receive the report, agree to make some sort of action plan to implement the items, or do so tonight. I'm easy to either of.
Yeah, I'm prepared to talk about it as well. Well, I'll go ahead and start us off. I thank you to all the people involved in this process, part of the work group and the CPRB, and, and staff that were involved in this process. I know it was long and arduous and a little bit longer than we expected, but I appreciate your patience on this. And of course, Jonathan, with your work as well and your team. But, yeah, it's, looking at it, I think, pretty, as was stated, having 12 people come to consensus on, you know, those items, I think is a great place to start, those 18 items. And also, given what, you know, the team said regarding the, the yellow items, I, it sounds like our staff was able to explore the 18 green items, and that it wouldn't be too much of a limp lift to implement. But I would like to explore some of the, the yellow items, especially the ones that had a little bit higher consensus on them, probably like, you know, gosh, I'd hate to grade it like, more like 75%, you know, on those. But that's where I'm looking right now.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think the information speaks for itself. I think the group did a great job. I think, as they stated, they went for what we knew we could move forward with. I think that if we're going to have a board, we need to give them confidence in our process and, you know, reinstate them or and/or get them moving forward, or give them the confidence to move forward. I think if this motion or this movement would help them do so, then, you know, I'm happy to move forward with that. And I also agree with, there's several items on the yellow list, but I don't think I wanted to start talking about that tonight if staff did not move forward or even address those items, since it's only been two workdays since that time of receipt, so, yeah.
Well, only action is just to receive it.
That's right.
That's it.
Well, we could also do more stuff, too.
I'm just saying, that's what the action is. Yeah.
One aspect is to receive. Another aspect is to provide guidance. Because we need to provide a huge, there's a huge lift of guidance that needs to be provided in this. We have several things swimming right now, whether, whether or not we reinstitute CPRB, what is it going to look like? When does that happen? Our recommendation as to whether or not we agree that the HRC and CPRB should be together. There's multiple things that this report just skims the surface on in regards to this work. I see this report, there's two aspects to it. There's some things that the work group brought together that are things that the work group, that I believe a CPRB would have consensus on, which are several of the green, the greenlit items. There are aspects of this that, as a commissioner, I want to see happen, that I think would be beneficial to a CPRB board. And there are aspects of this that I believe that anything that's in yellow and red should be reviewed by the CPRB members, whomever they are. Because they have just, they're, what we are agreeing to tonight is what they're going to be implementing. So it should be their first char, one of their many first charges as a board, not only just to review their bylaws, to identify whether or not they need a, an elevated code of ethics. And reviewing this report, aspects of it, you know, our, any citizen review accountability board rises above some of your typical boards and commissions. A CPRB, I'm not saying is better than or less than a parks and rec board, but the brevity and the density of the work that they do is way more complex than a parks and rec board. And so I think there is a different light. I think this is why we struggle with finding individuals consistent to be on the board. I think it has to speak to the training and responsibility from a city perspective of how we onboard individuals on CPRB, the ethics of it, an ethics agreement, an NDO agreement, a policy manual. A lot of these things that are listed here that are in yellow that can be attainable are policies. So how are they going? How do they review? I'm shocked that there is pushback into just the two in the beginning, 1.2 and 1.3. That's about accessibility. So, and we've had this conversation when I was a board member for HRC. We can't, when we talk about inclusion, that is accessibility, accessibility to resources and the ability of that person to be successful in utilizing those resources. So we need to know, do the current CPRB needs to look at, is the current complaint process accessible to those? And this work group said it wasn't. I believe that it's not, because it's following the same patterns in HRC. So these are things that I believe that we can, we can give that direction to now and say, there needs to be structure around a policy manual. And that's that we charge staff with, once the CPRB gets going, or we charge staff to create a draft of a policy manual based on some of these recommendations. That's what I would like to see. 1.1, window of appeals should be extended. I think that's a question for CPRB to review. Looking at the days, I mean, we're talking about 14 days, is that 14 business days? I mean, there's language that really needs to be looked at and studied on this, that the work group did their due diligence. They passed it on to us. I'm saying that we can either pass it on to the CPRB to look at these items, to look at these red items and these yellow items, to identify where they need to be. I know where I would want them to be if I was on the CPRB. So that's, that's the conversation I want to have tonight. But if we're not ready to have that conversation, then maybe this needs to come back to us in, in March or April, sooner rather than later, because that's the conversation that needs to be had.
Well, and I think, like you said, some of these yellow, you know, for example, is, you know, the accessibility of, the yellow 1.2 was dropping, you have more locations you can drop off complaints.
Right.
But when you read the explanation, the only real dissent is, well, if these are unmanned locations, who's going to check them? And so it's something that can be solved.
The CPRO, yeah.
I mean, it's something that can be walked through.
Right.
If it's, you know, but, you know, so the, I mean, I think some of these can be walked through. You know, I'm certainly obviously comfortable moving ahead with the green items, you know, again, some of those are, you know, complaint forms and things that we can do, but let's get moving on those. I think some of these require more discussion or more, you know, analysis either by staff or by us. And so I guess I see that as a, I don't know, maybe a couple-step process. I think Casey was, was suggesting maybe they, you know, some of these, they can, on the green ones, they can report back, do some of them. Other ones come back to us and say, hey, this is, we need to change this in the ordinance, and then this one, we need more guidance on. You know, do we do that with the green and the yellows, as an example, to have more discussion on those? I guess I would say, you know, I think one thing we want to give direction on tonight, because I want to get the committees on committees done, is to decide on HRC and the CPRB. And I guess I'll lean to say, given what this work group and what the consensus items are and what they see their charge to be, I think we keep them separate. And, you know, I could have envisioned a scenario in which they could have been more harmonious, but given what we have here, I think they're probably all separate. And, you know, so I guess I'd lean there on that. So that's kind of where I'm leaning. I think I would be interested, at least, moving forward with some of these, and then, you know, having a plan to come back and talk about the rest, is my thought.
On some of those, or would it, are you talking about some of the green or like all the greens and some of the yellow?
Well, I'm saying, I think some of the green can be done, you know, by staff without it coming back to us.
Okay.
That's what Casey said, you know, making the complaint form available on the website. Well, okay, fine, let's go do that. But some of them require changes to the ordinance, I think, at least a few of them would. That would have to come back to us to change the ordinance.
Right.
Others, once they look into the details, there might be something they need direction on us before they can do that, even on the green ones. Now, I think most of them are pretty easy to go with, but, and then I think on the yellow ones, I'd want staff to look at those and, you know, give us, you know, some thoughts on that and what they would need from us, you know, to consider that further. And again, maybe it's more of a high-level report back in March or April, you know, again, using this one I'm looking at. If you're going to have places to drop off complaints, we think you would want to limit it to three, and we think, we want to be sure it's checked every two days. limit it to three, and we think we want to be sure it's checked every two days or something. And, you know, is that something you want us to continue to investigate? And, you know, so there'd be like, we put it back to us, and then we could say, at that point, yea, yea or nay, and, you know, continue to move on a few of those. And I'm kind of talking off the top of my head, I'm looking at Casey, like, does that seem like something that's doable?
See if I can avoid knocking the microphone off this time. Did you say March or April?
Yeah, it's, you know.
Just recognizing there's only two meetings in March, and you all have some travel and we have some travel and, but, yeah, I mean, I think the process that you're outlining is doable, yes.
Yeah.
I guess I would also add that I think some of the items in the yellow are addressed in some of the greens.
Yes.
That as we, you know, we talked through them, the location of complaints is a good example. That's addressed in one of the green ones as well. So there's some instances where, you know, this wasn't a voting exercise. This wasn't vote for the one you want.
Right.
It was an attempt at trying to reach consensus. So sometimes the green reflect the consensus elements of those yellow and red items. I don't know if that's helpful to you all, but I wanted to be sure and share that.
I think the formatting would have been a lot easier because I went back and forth and between that, because I could see where there were some relational ones. And then reviewing and hearing the conversations and reviewing the meetings, I think that was what was a little bit, I was a little bit persnickety about, is that I could see the relationship between these and see the rationale, but then they were disjointed. So it's just like, so are we saying we resolved this aspect of it, but we're going to keep these two pieces and park them as a yellow? So for me, I think that's why, I'm going to stop right there. I'm going to stop. Because I need to hear from other commissioners, so.
Achieving consensus on the format of the report.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Challenge for the work group.
Yes.
Sure.
I think that's fair to say.
Yeah.
But to follow Commissioner Finkeldie, I would, I apologize that I failed to admit that. I would follow the work group's recommendation and have split the committee, keep the two boards separate, both HRC and CPRB. So I just wanted to make that known. HRC, sorry.
Yeah. So I think, from my understanding, I'm kind of catching up again. I feel like we've given some direction. I think the disconnection of the two boards is important to provide that direction for the board or the committee on committees. And then I believe, I'm not sure we're ready to move forward with approving all these items, because I believe, as Amber pointed out, there's other items that flow and are connected to green items that might be better to just move together into one felt swoop. So perhaps we regroup the recommendations into associated and tangential connections and then get them approved, but with the idea that we all agree that we feel like green is where we want to go and we want to be more aggressive in commingling those other potentially yellow and/or red items that may or may not be agreed to by everybody. I mean, that's what I'm hearing right now.
Yeah, I'm hearing consensus on, well, I'm not hearing consent, I'm hearing.
More than one person agrees.
Right, right. I'm hearing more than one person agrees.
Okay, so from a process standpoint, we're agreeing on things that are eventually going to have to come back to us because there, there's going to be requirements to changing of the bylaws and the ordinance. So from, I'm trying to map out in my head, agreeing on these contingent on what needs to be changed in bylaws and what's going to come back to us while we make a decision on whether or not to put, keep things separate and onboarding other people, which is sounding like, and we're going into budget season, which sounds like a five to six-month process on getting this done. So I'm just, I'm trying to map out in my mind how we're going to go about this. Because we're going to get this, nothing can continue on because what we decide could affect amendments needing to be done. So I guess concurrently, getting things back on track with CPRB and moving that at the same time. So when does that need to come? And we're saying about April, that needs to all come back to us. It sounds like this is what we're bundling together that needs to come back to us in a couple of months.
Yeah, I agree.
Agreed.
I'm not sure I'm clear on what's coming back to you. I think I heard the green consensus. Then I am not clear on how the yellow and the red, if at all, are supposed to be brought back to you in April. Are we supposed to take components of the yellow and red that are addressed in the green and proceed and come back and tell you in April how what we did, did that?
Yes, I think that's what I was envisioning because I was seeing the interconnectivity between these items, although they're separated visually, there's interconnectivity, but good job interpreting, Casey. That's what I was getting at, at least. I'm not sure.
Commissioner Finkeldie, is that open?
Casey, I mean, I mean, there's aspects of these that we can, I mean, if we need to send to you to share. Because I mean, there's, I mean, I have reds that I want to come back. Like, there are things that are listed as red that, in my opinion, should be greens. You know, not consistent side on 1.4, just talking about, which I think it's missing an article in there somewhere, but in regards to executive session and review. There's, I mean, I can make a pitch for, I mean, in my mind, I can see that as needing to be a part of the process. But again, is that a policy manual? Is that, are we saying that needs to be included in ordinance? That may be included in bylaws? So there's a lot of different pieces to this that I think outside of, we agree with the green. The next step is, how did the green impact the current structure and function of the board? Do we need to make amendments? Are those amendments incoming to us and bypassing CPRB and coming directly, we're calling on that to happen? Are we then giving you the go to say, make these amendments to fit, so that whatever's in the green or we agree upon retrofits that while simultaneously giving recommendations to the mayor for board members? I'm trying to map this out in my head. So the math is not math right now. That could be because I haven't eaten since 2:00.
If I could interject, given that this, the CPRB is an advisory board of the commission and serves at the will of the commission, I think what Commissioner Finkeldie, and I think there was some agreement there, was a good plan. And that, he said that we should move ahead with the green items, recognizing that some of the other items, both yellow and red, require staff or city commission analysis. So he would like us, or he recommended that we identify, after we leave tonight's meeting, what we can do of the green items, of what we can do unilaterally, just start taking action. And then, at the same time, when we bring back a report on that, we identify for the commission, okay, these items need an actual ordinance change. And we come back and tell the commission, and we could have a draft ordinance even ready, and you could, you could consider it or, you know, just sit with it and then consider it at a later date. And then, the commission, the staff could look at the yellow and red items, provide some analysis, some issues, some concerns, and bring those back to the commission and say, we need more direction. I think that is a better course than having us trying to read minds about, well, I think the commission wanted this. Commissioner Sellers said she wanted to see this, but I didn't hear anybody else on the commission say that. So it puts staff in a very difficult position to read the minds of five people who are very, you know, have very strong opinions on this, like members of the public have.
I didn't know we were requiring you to do that. I think we all had general, I think we all agreed with Commissioner Finkeldie. What I was saying is just, at some point, we need to, as commissioners, map this out. So I don't disagree with that. My only point is that in addition to the green ones, I have yellow ones and a red one that I want you to look at, because it makes, in my opinion, it makes sense. So if you need consensus from the commission right now on those three that I would like to be considered along with the green, then we can do that right now.
Well, that would be another option.
Commissioners?
I guess my proposal was that we get some more feedback on some of the, from staff on those yellow and red items before we decide if we say yea or nay on them. That's what I was suggesting. But I would like them all looked at, because I think they're all, some of them are very positive.
Okay. We can go with that, and this will be the last thing I say, because I think anything else I say is just going to, we're going to cycle, and I don't really want us, and I don't have the temperament to cycle tonight. If the idea was that staff looked at the green ones, I don't understand why staff couldn't look at the yellow and the red ones as well, because we, as commissioners, had to look at this as a whole. And the idea that we were just going to come in here and rubber stamp the green ones is insulting to me and is insulting to the work group and the work that they did. So I feel like a lot of this could have been bypassed if staff would have just gone ahead and looked into this, because then we wouldn't be second guessing. And I don't know if others made to connect to the dots that there were some yellows that matched reds and matched greens and had to navigate that, but I did. And so to hear that we're kind of cycling again, it's whatever. So I'm, we can go with Commissioner Finkeldie's route if it gets us going. But again, I think I'm just a little bit frustrated right now that, what was the point of it coming to us if we weren't going to give staff, forget it, I don't want to, it's moot.
Commissioner Deber, were you on board with Commissioner Finkeldie's route?
I think, you know, I am with Commissioner Sellers. I want to see this moving forward. I know people spend a lot of time. I'd like to see everything, the action move forward. And if it's simpler and easier to do so, then I'd be in favor of that, to do what Commissioner Finkeldie proposed. But I also believe, and, you know, intimated earlier, that there are connectivities between the other items, and I think we need to try to get them all grouped up together the best we can in the future. So, tonight, we were to receive these items, and I think we're doing so. I think receiving them and understanding that we want action is part of the plan, and I feel like we've met that duty. But I also agree that I'd like to take action and move forward, but I also understand staff only had basically a day and a half to go for this, so.
Commissioner Larson?
I think all of them need to be looked at. I'm not ready to give staff direction because that's not what the action is.
Okay, fair. I concur with Commissioner Finkeldie's plan of action on that, just to give staff direction on that, so.
Mayor, if I could, this only relates to the committee on committees work. We are drafting the same language throughout all the boards and commissions. So our work is so that all boards and commissions have very similar structure. So it's going to necessitate that both of these two, the CPRB and the HRC, we will look at them the same way. Want to make sure everybody understands that, and you're good with that. Because that's the drafting work we need to be doing. We're going to keep them separate, but we're going to put this model language throughout all of our boards and commissions into there. And so that's work that we should be getting on with as well.
Okay. Is that okay?
I just want to make a quick note that this item is under regular agenda items, and the action was to receive. So the action is based on the item that we're getting. So the act, so the idea that we are receiving a final report does not devoid us from providing direction and giving staff a charge. And if I'm mistaken, and if I'm incorrect, then I will retract my statement. But as many meetings I've been in that follow a pseudo-parliamentary structure, the action is based on the item, not the action of the commission. So we're receiving the report, but that doesn't mean we just sit here and receive it and say, thank you, and we appreciate your good work. We do that in addition to providing guidance to staff. But if I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
Greg, do you guys have it?
We specifically put it as a regular agenda item, because we, it has been ambiguous when we said work session before, that that was seen to be non-action oriented. And so we were trying to do that very specifically, so that it gave you the latitude to take action.
Which I appreciate. I was just asking if you, staff had everything they needed from us.
I appreciate somebody restating it before we leave.
Okay. Commissioner Finkeldie, do you, is it back in your gray matter? Can you pull it out?
Tony was, she was trucking through it.
Let me hear that again, make sure.
Uh huh. Staff should move ahead with the green items from the report. Other items require city commission or staff analysis. So in April, staff should identify what of the green items can be done by staff on its own initiative, which items require an ordinance, and report that back to the commission at that time. And then, if there are items, staff should analyze both the yellow and the red items, provide some analysis, and identify which issues or items we need more commission direction from, bring those forward so the commission has an opportunity to give direction at that time.
Correct.
And to be sure I'm clear, those would both come back at the same time.
Very good.
In April. Okay.
Yes.
Along with separating, keeping both those boards separate.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
So should we move that item?
Is that? So moved, it's turned.
Is that?
It, just like on, I would say, in on work sessions, sometimes we'll give guidance to staff, like, just so we know how to move forward.
Good deal.
I mean, you're wanting a motion on that.
I don't think we need a formal motion, as she stated it, unless there's objections.
I have none, sir.
I have none?
That's how we will proceed.
Okay.
Unless there's objections.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all for all of your hard work on this. I'm glad to go ahead and see this move forward. Okay, moving us on to item F, commission items. Any commission items?
I don't have any, sir.
All right, not hearing any. Okay, item G, city manager's report.
The only two items are the regular utility billing report and then future agenda items.
Okay. And the city manager's report is an item that has public comments? Any public comment on it?
Yeah, I got a little public comment for the city manager's report. There's a push happening, and you guys need to get on board. We need to get rid of the city manager and turn into a strong mayor community. It's time to change the form of government that we have. Have a good night, guys.
All right, any additional public comment here in the room? All right, not seeing any? Any on Zoom?
Stephen Watts?
Thank you. Mr. Littlejohn and commissioners, I did not hear you state when the community police review board would begin meeting again, please. Thank you.
That's all.
Okay, all right. Item H, commission calendar.
Sure, that one on the 22nd, that ribbon cutting, that, I'm doing that one, aren't I?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to double check.
I think so, yeah. Any other comments on the calendar?
No, sir.
All right, moving us on. Adjournment.
May I move to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All right, I have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Goodbye.
Pass is 5-0. Pass is 5-0.[1783.47]